Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September three, twenty twenty four meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I'm Commissioner Rossi Parenti. With us this evening.
Paul Kaplan.
Kevin Cornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack Demerjen, zoning administrator.
Jenny Bowser.
Our administrative zoning administrative assistant. Okay.
Excuse me, Commissioner Chairman, if I could just have one minute of indulgence.
Yeah.
I just wanted to note the passing of Mike Clemens, who we've had issues with his property from time to time, especially over the last year, but he was just a very nice man, always wonderful to me and my family, and I just wanted to, you know, note the passing of him.
Thank you for mentioning that. Yeah, I unfortunately didn't know him because everyone who mentions him.
He was a real nice guy.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I never got to know him.
He was a great guy.
That's too bad, but thank you for bringing that up. And we're going to be missing Commissioner Tarenti this evening, so.
Which one?
He's got some stuff going on tomorrow that needs to prepare for tonight, so he's got the night off. All right, so getting to our agenda then, first item is a review of the minutes from the June eighteenth in the August sixth, twenty twenty four meetings. Let's take the June eighteen minutes first.
And I believe we actually did already make some changes on these. I think we just didn't have enough voting members who attended this meeting last time.
Yeah, I'm looking at this. It says the motion to approve the June eighteen, twenty twenty four meeting minutes is postponed to the next meeting. If on August sixth, we were all there.
So the last meeting, we didn't put it on the agenda because we forgot that we had to go back.
Oh, all right.
Minutes from like two meetings ago.
Okay.
But we couldn't approve them, the meeting directly after because we didn't have members who attended that meeting in attendance at that meeting.
So that makes sense then?
Right, so we did already comment and revise these. We just didn't have enough voting members at the time to do it, so we do tonight.
Okay, you know what? I felt like I looked at him for the first time this morning when I looked at him.
We could always make further corrections.
I did have a couple of things to mention. On the second page.
Were we looking at the same set?
I don't know.
With Oscar, myself, and Paul.
Minutes of June eighteen, right?
Minutes of the Aug.
You're looking at August sixth, yeah, so that's going to be the ones we haven't looked at yet.
You know what? I'm sorry, I'm backwards here. Yes, all right, I'm with you, June eighteenth, it was just Judy, Paul, and I. Right. And we had already commented on this?
I believe so, yeah. Jenny, we made some revisions, right?
Yes.
But again, if there's further revisions, we can always do that.
Well, it's just the language thing on the very last sentence on page one. Lastly, Mr. Demerjen reported that he has been on top of signage of the post road. I would say he has been requesting removal by owners of signage, right? That's what you've been doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Requesting.
Climbing the signs.
So he's been on, he's been requesting removal by owners of signage on the post road.
Temporary signage.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
Not unpermitted.
Or just say that does not comply with the zoning regulations.
Sure, we can make that adjustment.
And then once I do those, are they approved then?
Once we vote.
We're going to approve them with the changes tonight, yeah.
Yeah, and on the second page, it's like, it's in that first full paragraph, four lines or three lines down, the school has, sentence begins, the school has considered developing the abutting property. I think it's important to say that they own, that otherwise, you know, wouldn't be of any significance.
They own in the future.
In the future.
Yeah.
And then, let's see, one, two, three, fourth full paragraph, last, adding a condition that the Hebrew school must present at least a conceptual design plan, and then I would add for a permanent.
Addition.
Addition within a year of this approval.
Got it.
The next paragraph, I think Mrs. Williams just was mistaken as to the address, if I remember correctly, she came in.
I just didn't know if I should put that in just because it was present. She was here, yeah, I think it needs to stay.
Regarding, but she was referring to a, the incorrect property.
Yeah, she thought we were.
Regarding a separate property.
Right. So I don't know how you want to clean that up, indicate that.
We'll figure something out.
You know, but she, you know, she, she thought we were dealing with a different property.
On dogwood.
Yeah, and the only other thing I would add, it says Commissioner Kaplan made the motion to approve the request by the New Haven Day School to extend the time limitation to use and occupy the temporary classrooms. I would stick in there for two years, from eight one twenty four to eight one twenty six, and then go on with the rest of it upon the terms and conditions that were mentioned. Just so it's clear that we approved a two-year extension.
Yeah, no.
And then starting an ending date for the extension.
Jack, on the one to third paragraph, I don't know how you clean this up, I'm not even sure you necessarily have to, it says Kaplan inquired about the physical condition of the classrooms for health and safety purposes, and it says Mr. Demerjen referred to the state building regulations concerning the length of time that temporary structures are no longer temporary?
Yeah, I think what we were talking about is you wanted to make sure that they're being regularly inspected.
Yes.
And we kind of went into, it's more for the building department to inspect these classrooms, and then we had some discussion because previously they had been in existence for long enough that the state building code no longer saw them as temporary. They had exceeded whatever that number of years was.
Right.
They are permanent, so they are being inspected, and they were actually.
Okay.
I know that they already have them.
All right, well, that was all I had, I don't know if anybody has anything else. All right, then, let's, can we get a motion to approve the June eighteen, twenty twenty four minutes as amended?
I think I was there, yes, so moved.
Okay, we have.
I will second the motion.
Motion, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain, okay, Commissioner Cornell abstains. All right, on the August sixth, twenty twenty four minutes. I had a couple of things on page two under reported the zoning enforcement officer. Mr. Demerjen reported that the ZBA ruled on Mike's garage at two seventeen Derby Ave regarding the three violations. I would add the three violations cited by the zoning enforcement officer. And then I would say, the next sentence, items, cross out items, I'd say two and three, two of, two of the three cited violations were upheld, and one was not.
By the ZBA, or it's understood.
Two of the three were upheld and one item was not?
Yeah. Two of the.
Two of the three.
He's referring to it as though it's item number two and item number, but there's no reference in the minutes.
Right, I understand, yeah.
So you want to be specific just that.
No, I just want to say two, two of the three cited violations were upheld, one was not, yeah, by the ZBA, yep. And then the other thing, you have a reference here to Sponge Brothers has submitted a site plan application, that's for the car wash at seventy nine Boston Post Road, correct? I would just add that. Because otherwise Sponge Brothers is. Oh, the only other thing I had was, this is kind of picky, but I guess, Commissioner Kaplan made a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven forty two, was seconded by Commissioner Smith, and then there was a vote. Kaplan was in favor, Tarenti, Cornell, Parenti, but I guess Smith was not happy with it or just didn't.
She wanted to stay.
She wanted to stay.
Stayed a little longer. Seven forty two is very early for us. I wanted an hour.
So I think, I'm guessing that Judy.
I've been called worse.
I'm guessing that Judy was in favor of that, if I remember, yeah. So that's the only change I would.
They always forget the short one.
All right, that's all I had, anybody, anybody else? All right, then a motion?
A motion to approve?
Yes.
The June, I mean, the August sixth minutes of the zoning board?
I thought you were asking. No, no, motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion?
We got to have two meetings a month. Second?
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, takes care of our minutes. All right, next thing is old business, do we have any topics that we wish to discuss there? Jack, I think you were going to follow up on that, the special, the special standards for elderly.
For in-laws.
In-law apartments.
Yes.
You were going to talk to Vinnie and?
I did, yeah, I actually sat down with Owen Weaver, who's a partner in Vinnie's office, and we are currently looking into, and I gave him a copy of that, that letter that we had sort of a template for.
Yeah.
And sending out, we made one or two changes to it, but he wanted to sit down with Vinnie and really go through any state statute that our regulation might have been based off of in, back in like the eighties, I think when it was adopted, and he hasn't gotten back to me on that just yet, but we have sat down, he knows, you know, what we're doing, and, you know, we were well on our way for that.
I mean, there's got to be some procedure to undo our approval if, if the standards, you know.
We've pretty much both settled on that we're comfortable that in our requirements, it says this yearly certification must be submitted by January thirty first every year. That right there is what the commission needs to take this action, saying you no longer meet this requirement, we are now revoking your special permit. He doesn't see any issue with us filing that letter on the land records as well, so.
He does not?
He does not see an issue at the moment, he says he wants to look into it a little bit.
The thing that you brought in front of him was, does it have to be an enabling, enabling language to somehow institute any kind of proceedings against them?
Right, he wanted to make sure we had language giving, you know, this board the right to revoke that special permit. And the requirement in there, you know, saying you need to give us this affidavit by January thirty first.
And if they don't do it.
He said that's pretty darn clear right there. So he just wanted to look into it a little bit, and I think we're kind of planning on, you know, maybe implementing this in January, or, you know, we can do earlier if we want. But we had that discussion, and he feels pretty, pretty comfortable with the commission being able to just file that on the land records, signifying that that special permit is no longer active due to their lack of certification.
And is January thirty first actually the date?
That was the day in our requirement that we asked them by, yes.
You know, again, I'm not sure that the land records is the right place, it may just be the building department and.
Well, it would go in both, but.
And the planning and zoning.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable with it on the land records because you're filing the permit on the land records, you should file the revocation of that there as well.
Are they though? Are they filing the permit?
I know the ones, yeah, we put it in every special permit approval, this must be filed on the land records, yeah.
Yeah, so if you remove it, then it should.
If I put a lien on the property, I file that on the land records, and if someone gets rid of it, I have to file that release, signifying that it's no longer.
Yeah, no question, but I think that the initial, the initial special permit approval has to go on the land records.
Right, and if for any reason that it's not.
Right.
If for any reason that it's not, then it was never legal in the first place because they failed to take that step.
All right, as long as we're working on it, you know.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, we've already sat down.
We can undo whatever approvals we give.
Yeah, for this specific permit, yes.
Yeah, for that.
He felt that language gave us plenty of discretion.
Okay. Anything else under old business? All right, then the next item on our agenda is new business, BFJ Planning, Plan of Conservation The consultant is with us this evening. Good, good. You want to take us through a presentation?
Sure, please.
Yeah, please, I had to come up here for the camera purposes.
Yeah, and I would say you're welcome to. Yeah, you're welcome to, I mean, you're not an applicant, or you're a consultant. Yeah, so yes, please make yourselves comfortable.
Suzanne Goldberg.
Yeah, maybe we should go around, let you know who we are.
Yeah.
So the speaking head is on?
Oh, yeah, just make sure the green light is on if you're talking.
So that the green light is on?
Well, it's green and then it gets greener, so.
Ah, there we go, there we go. Thank you. I'll just introduce, I'm Frank Fish, I'm one of the principals of BFJ Planning, and I'll be the principal in charge for this, this work. Suzanne.
Sure, I'm Suzanne Goldberg, I'm with BFJ Planning, and I would be acting as the project manager on the P O C D.
And I'm Thomas Madden, I just want to give the presentation if you remember.
I'll be working on the economic development and helping out Suzanne with the planning portion of everything.
Chris will come out and yell at you.
Sorry, Chris.
And you all may have it, but we have hard copies here of the, of the agenda. If you don't have an agenda, we've got extra copies, so. So I thought what we would do is I might go through the agenda items, and the most important to us is the page two, the whole timeline, but I'd then turn it over to Suzanne a little bit to go through the public outreach portions of this, and also to Thomas on terms of economic, the economic development chapter. But just a little bit of sort of housekeeping, if you will, item one is just introduction, project organization. The way we understand this is we would, because Kevin, you raised something I heard earlier about, you know, different, just different people in town and inclusiveness and representation, but we, we feel here that you, the P and Z, under state law, have the ability to adopt this plan, the P O C D, so we understand that you would in effect be our steering committee. I mean, you do have the right to appoint a committee if you want, but I understand from Jack that, that you would be that, that committee.
So ten years ago, since you guys were on the board, did you bring in any additional people to be parts of those meetings, or did we run the, run the show until the final product?
Well, we did, we did hold.
We had many public hearings.
Well, no, it wasn't just public hearing.
And public meetings.
There was an event at High Plains.
Where the public was invited to participate.
Right, but no, but no one was part of the steering committee?
No.
That, that interacted, okay.
That would be us.
Right, yeah.
Just.
That's my understanding from last time.
That's fine, that's fine with us. We, well, we have a whole public, a whole proposal for you on public engagement, but I just wanted to just make sure of that because we would, we would then be meeting with you, we'd like to meet with you on a sort of regular schedule then, to make sure that, quite frankly, you're the ones adopting it, and we want to make sure that what we do and produce for you, you direct, and that it becomes your, your plan, so that when we go eventually to public hearing or send this out to regional planning agency of the state, you're comfortable with the plan, so. And then the team, the BFJ team, we've sort of introduced ourselves already, but there'll be some other people in our office also working on this, for instance, we have a transportation group that'll look at the transportation chapter and the roads, that type of thing. And we also have some environmental and natural resource people, so there'll be different people working on this, but basically I'll act as the principal, so I hopefully will be at all of the key meetings, and then Suzanne will be our project manager, and Suzanne will be a key liaison with, with your planner, and, and so that might be on as much as a weekly or bi-weekly basis, so, so we keep, keep the channels of communication open all the time, so. And that leads me to, which I've just covered now, just so, she's listed here, she will be the project manager, and there's, you know, Suzanne's contact information. And then I'd like to just bring you through quickly on item three, if you sort of go to page two, it's easier for me to do on, you know, we're hoping to do this in response to your, you know, request for proposals, as you can see, we're trying to do this in about a year, one year period of time for the P O C D, and start, so starting this, this month really with this meeting. And what we hope to do is, and Suzanne's going to go a little bit through the, the public engagement, which is sort of phase one, but it will go all through, the project public engagement. What we're going to try to do in the next few months while we review prior plans, that type of thing, is also look at the regional setting, it's two point one there, regional trends, two point two, some of the social economic conditions and land use and zoning, because what we'd like to do is when we get to a first workshop, and the workshops or hearings are in those yellow squares, and we're going to suggest to you that maybe because, I think there had been an anticipation of maybe starting in August, but we're really starting in September, to move that first workshop just a little bit into November, but before Thanksgiving, and we wanted to talk to you about that because at the first public workshop, we're hoping to show, you know, in a presentation, sort of the existing data about the town, we like to call it orange today, you know, for the public, so that we get social economic data, population data, growing, not growing, what are the existing conditions, and also something, some things we will take from, and update from your original plan, by the original plan, I should say, the existing plan, and that's your regional setting, your land use and your zoning, but we will update that zoning, for instance, we, we did a little site visit, and, you know, I hadn't known that you've changed, you've taken away that TOD zone, and state's no longer, you know, going to build any train station.
Train's not coming to town.
Train's not coming to town, right, and so, you know, we want to make that change.
Briefly.
Right. So we want to make that change because we started, you know, we started going through all of this, so that what we'll try to do is give a briefing to the public as to where things are now, new census data, changes like that, and in the first workshop, be able to present to them something called an updated sort of orange today, if you will. And we'll get to the mechanics of that, of that workshop, but one thing we want to do tonight is see if we can get some dates with you, we have a couple of dates in mind, and, you know, also talk to you about being prepared for that workshop, and maybe meeting with you again, and say, I think you have, you do have two meetings a month, right?
Yes.
Maybe at your October, your second October meeting, because before we present anything, we like, we want, you know, we want Jack to see.
Want to know we agree.
Right, we want to know that you have seen everything, and if you have changes to make, we make those changes, so that what the public sees, you have seen ahead of time. And so we'd like to suggest maybe the second, your second meeting in October to meet with you again.
So I just happen to know that from the eighteenth to the twenty eighth, a little farther north, be out of, out of the country, so if we could do it in the first meeting of October, try, again, trying your thing, or, you know, not that I'm a key player.
Maybe we can come there.
I was thinking maybe you still on the planet?
Newfoundland? Newfoundland?
Yeah, sounds great.
I don't, I don't think they have cell coverage.
And thank you for pronouncing that correctly, too.
If we could make it for October, if you could.
You're going to be away from the eighteenth, you said?
Yeah.
When's our?
When are our meetings?
When are our October meetings?
I think the eighteenth is a Friday.
Because we could be meeting, oh, yes, yeah.
What we do is one session.
October. Be October first and October fifteenth.
Oh, oh, I'm in.
Oh, good, you're in.
Never mind.
And I'll confirm that in case we have, I don't think there's any holidays or any reason for us to be rescheduling, but.
So when is your regularly scheduled second meeting in October, when is that?
Uh, no, the fifteenth.
The fifteenth, Tuesday, the fifteenth, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, right, orange, P and Z, good, that's great, because that way we then review everything with you, all of our initial work we'd review, and we'll send, we'll send ahead of time to, to planning, and then that prepares us for perhaps a workshop in, we'd like to do it before Thanksgiving if we could, just be, you know, so we're not, we're not trying to do anything over Christmas, New Year's, that type of thing, so if we could do something, we were thinking of a workshop, I think we were thinking November, the week of November eleventh, or possibly the week of November eighteenth. It depends on what else is happening here.
We were anticipating scheduling a special meeting for that, so, or, I mean, unless we could try to make it work during a meeting, but I know today we were talking more of a special meeting, so we could kind of have that as our one agenda item, you know, have people show up for that.
Yeah, it may turn out, though, that, well, probably safer to make it a special meeting.
I think so, too.
I think it is.
So you need to do it as a special meeting?
Yeah, that's the case anyways.
I think it is better to do it as a special meeting, if you can.
Yeah, let's see, November, we said, right?
Yeah, so the twelfth, thirteenth, or fourteenth, we were excluding the eleventh since it's Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, yeah.
Or the next week, the eighteenth through twenty first.
On my way, eleven to fourteen.
Eleven to fourteen, so.
Well, how's the week of the eighteenth?
Yeah, so either eighteen, Monday, the eighteenth, Tuesday, the nineteenth, Wednesday, the twentieth, or Thursday, the twenty first.
Those dates sound okay to me, any, any one of them.
Yeah, not, not that Monday, so Monday, well, keep in mind, we'd also probably be trying to do this at the community center, is that right?
Yeah, maybe you could ask for their availability first.
Yeah, let me, let me look into, well, we could choose a couple of dates tonight if we want, and then I can go in and look tomorrow.
You can go in, yeah.
Yeah, let's.
So we've narrowed it down to the week of November eighteenth, so it'll be sometime between the eighteenth and the twenty first, Monday through Thursday, we're available any of those evenings. And the other thing, the other thing we wanted to discuss, we can go to the community center, or we could have the opening workshop here, the only thing here is that if you expect more than seventy or eighty people, I guess the room illegally accommodates ninety people, if you expect more than that, then we would move, would probably be safer at the community center, it's up to you.
So I'm not sure it's instructive, but ten years ago, my recollection, it was fairly well-attended, but not hundreds, I don't believe.
No.
Maybe thirty or forty people came through at the, I'm thinking at the community center, maybe it was a little bit more than that, am I misremembering?
I'm remembering.
Isn't Judy responsible for taking that information down?
Yes, no, we were there, was there public participation, were they putting Post-its on things, utilized tables?
There were stations, right there.
Stations, right, so, I mean, that's one other reason why we needed the space.
Yes, by the way, a second workshop later on, where we'll have roundtable discussions, Post-its, all of that, we're going to need to move to the community center. So here, we could have the opening workshop here, but that's why I wanted to ask you your feeling on how many people might come, the community center.
For safety sake, there's no reason not to do it at the community center, it's not that much of a shit.
The only reason, just, you know, to discuss it, for having it here, might be that people could participate by observing it on the.
I think we'd be, I think we'd be working with Chris, we'd be televising that as well.
Oh, we would.
Yeah, so we'd have to, because they do meetings over there, too, so they could set that.
Good.
Absolutely.
All right, great, so maybe we can plan the week of the 18th at the community center, the night it's available.
I was gonna say, yeah, I'll take the availa, I'll take the availability for that week. I assume we're trying to avoid Friday?
Oh, Jack, yeah, not Friday.
Yeah, okay, so I'm like.
It should be Monday through Thursday.
All right, so the 18th to the 21st, I will see what's available. I know we also went there today. I don't think it's gonna take that long, but they are redoing the floor in the cafeteria right now. So I wanna make sure that it's gonna be open and available.
We met in the gym.
Gym.
Really, the gym last time?
Yep.
Okay, so.
I'm almost positive we were in the gym.
Yeah, whether it's gym or caf, the only meetings I've held in that were always in the cafeteria, but if the gym, we could go either or. So I'll get availability for both.
Right.
Week of the 18th.
Find out when they're not doing yoga.
Yes. There's no, like, day, week right off the bat that works better for commission members. We'll just see availability and then go.
Tell me where to go.
Good, okay, great, great. All right, well, that's the first business here on that, so we've got that set up. And then just after the, by the way, in the workshop, what we try to do is give a presentation, as I said, to bring the public up to date is, hey, what have we been asked to do? What is a P O C D? What's state law? What have you done in the past? So sort of a snapshot then of an update of, you know, social economic that's in here and some of the changes that we are aware of, we saw today on our site visit. And then we'll sometimes ask the public, and particularly if we have a cafeteria, it's if we can have some coffee over there, take a break and then have the public come back after the coffee and get into sort of, we like to have some questions, we like to have some Q and A, particularly about goals and objectives for the future after we've made the presentation. So there's different ways to do that, we can do that. And that would be the first workshop and then.
Would we be advertising essentially for the event on a number of occasions?
Yeah, so that'll be part of, like, the communication side of everything. Suzanne's gonna go over that.
Yeah, Suzanne will go over all of this in just a minute. And what I'll try to do is just finish quickly the whole big picture and then turn the details a little bit on public outrage to Suzanne. But what we're hoping to do then is after that workshop, we'll have an online survey because we'll know some of the issues then. And that will be during the point where we'll be writing some draft chapters. And that's really phase three here on this timeline. And you can see those chapters on demographics, housing, land use, you know, transportation, economic development, which Thomas is gonna talk about in a minute. And all of the, we've gotta cover all of the things that obviously state law requires us to. And I think your current plan covers those, those issues. We just need to update them and focus in on them. And as we do that, we'd like to come back then after the holidays and the new year with a second workshop and go into some more detail with the public on preliminary findings, if you will. They're not, won't be recommendations yet, but, and then have some roundtable discussions and get really into it, back and forth with the people who attend, so it can be interactive. And then after that, and we reported that second meeting on results of the survey. So as we go along here, we wanna make sure the public is involved. And as we develop each draft chapter, we'd like to send it to Jack, who could then give it to you so that you see everything before anything is made public. We'd like you to see all the chapters first. And then once you're okay, we'd get them online. And Suzanne will talk about going online with this. And then finally, we're going to, we've gotta get a draft in place. And we've gotta send that draft to the, your, what state law says is your legislative board, which I presume here, in your case, is the first selectman, board of selectmen. And also you've gotta send it to the regional planning agency. And the regional planning agency will get 65 days to review. So that does give us a little time within which you can hold a public hearing. And we've, we were kind of, would hope that that public hearing could be before next summer. In other words, we're trying to aim it for June, before school gets out and, you know, sort of, you'll, you won't get criticized for having it, you know, third week of August, type of thing. So if we could get it in June, I think that would be good. Then after the public workshop, we have to come back with you and review all of those comments. We'll have some suggestions for you, but you would be the ultimate decision makers on, you know, the comments that have been made at the workshop, what kind of revisions would you like? And then once that is done, we then publish the document for you, for adoption, actually. Now, we have to wait during that period, the selectmen have to, board of selectmen have to say, okay, and we need comments from the regional planning agency. And you have to determine if, sometimes there's no comments. You know, discretionary comments and do you take them or not take them, that type of thing. So, and then that's, that's sort of the overall and what the red, red dots here at the bottom, the red circles, are trying to meet with you often enough so that you see everything before every workshop. And through Jack, you see all draft chapters, so that you have comments on them, we revise them. So it's a continual iterative process and a process which brings the public in through the workshops, through the survey, an online survey. And then, of course, the public hearing is mandated by state law. So that, that's the overall sort of schedule. With that, maybe I could turn it to Suzanne because item four is community engagement. So, Mr. Chairman, we'll get to your question now on that engagement.
Yeah, so just, just to go back to the timeline for a second. So you can see that one point to the community engagement strategy. So this is something we create at the beginning of a process that really outlines what the best tools for engagement are for Orange and when, how many meetings will be held and sort of the main goals of those meetings. And as time goes on, if we see that those tools aren't working or the locations aren't working or so and so forth, we can revise it as we go. But just so you know, that's our first sort of item for us to, our first deliverable to you all is a community engagement strategy outlining our plan over the next coming months. So just to start off on what that might be, that plan. So as Frank mentioned, there'll be two workshops. The first is more of an introduction to the P O C D and also a little bit of a visioning, sort of understanding maybe what some of those key issues, opportunities are. So if we go back first to the sort of how to advertise for this event, so things we've done in the past have been, that have been successful. Is one, posting on a website, I don't know, we can talk maybe offline with you, with your IT department, if they would prefer if we housed maybe a sub-page within your existing town website or if you want a separate webpage to post all of the materials. But we like to keep people up to date, post materials as we go along, such as presentations, you know, the draft chapters, those sorts of things. So that's one point. And then also, we see that flyers and social media work very well. So, you know, that you have some upcoming festivals and things like that. And we suggest if we give you flyers that you, with, you know, QR codes to the website or information about upcoming meetings, if you do have the capacity to hand them out at those festivals and if there's any other key spots in the community that we can provide them for, that way, if people don't necessarily see them online, they have, you know, multiple reminders that this is happening and will hopefully reach as many people as possible, but.
Excuse me, one second.
Yeah.
We should do it on, O G A T will do it for us, right, I assume?
I don't, I don't know.
They do a roll, they do.
A roll.
Yeah, yeah.
Upcoming events.
We have internal television stations gone for specific.
That's great, that would be great.
Does the town have a general list, like an email list that goes out to everybody?
Well, you have.
Yeah, we have like a, like an agenda list, but as for like general public, I mean, I would check with the board of select, or the first selectman's office on that.
If you could find out, that would be perfect.
Cause yeah, if they have an agenda list, that might be a little bit more good towards everyone, yeah. And not just people interested in land use topics.
Okay, so we can circle back with you on that, but we can provide the content for you to send those e-boss out, yeah.
We could put on our website, we could, you know, if you guys wanna have your own separate webpage that, you know, a link kind of takes you to. But, you know, Chris and our IT department are very nice to work with, so they'll help out any way they can, I'm sure.
That's great, cause that'll get the word out.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I obviously see the value in the, you know, the, on the website and all that. But I think, my sense is it's important to get pieces of paper out.
Well, we could put, do articles, there's two local newspapers that are pretty well read.
That's good, that's good, we can.
And I'm sure a reporter would be happy to do a story about it.
You know, a flyer that could be circulated at the country fair, basketball.
Right, 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 no.
But, you know, Orange, Orange Soccer, you know, Sunday Morning Soccer.
Can I say that with love? There are a large segment of the population is older.
Yeah.
And may not get to the outdoor activities. So there should be a way to reach out to them.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say, you know, may not, may not be that, you know, familiar is the wrong word, but, you know, that in tune with, you know, the internet stuff.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking that Judy's.
The Orange Bulletin.
The Orange Bulletin and also O G A T would be, I think, useful.
Yeah.
And the senior center would know how to get in touch with us.
Yeah, we could put flyers at the senior center.
Uh, that'd be great, yeah.
But I do think it's important to have something, you know, a piece of paper.
Yes.
That can be handed out at different.
Something tangible, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Different places, different times.
We can make posters and flyers, as Suzanne said, and for your use at all of these, all of senior center. I like the, I've always liked the idea of if a reporter will write an article, we can do a draft if they, you know, sometimes they like that. But if.
That should be easy, you know.
Yeah, I don't think any of our local newspapers are gonna give you too hard of a time getting an article in there.
Good.
They're usually asking for articles.
Yeah, they're usually asking, yeah. So that'd be good.
So we'll reach out to you, Jack, when we have our, you know, first meeting, just to get all of those contacts. We can make a stakeholder list and so we know for all the upcoming meetings who we can reach out to, how to get the word out. And so that brings us to our next question about key stakeholders. And we can, you know, explore this as we go on, but if there's any community groups that you should, that we should be aware of, about reaching out to, to spread the word. And then also, the last point is if there's any strategies to engage some of those hard to reach populations, maybe people that don't typically come to meetings, maybe aren't always in tune with, with what's happening in the town. We'd like to hear their voices, too.
I would suggest kind of what I had mentioned today, where in the contract, we have a list of.
A list of the organizations.
Yeah, those, the chair people there, yeah, they are great people to reach out to. I mean, they're on the boards that I think have opinions about town. So I think they're, they're good people to speak to.
Yeah.
And I also always reach out, like when we were doing our four of the housing plans, both Democrats and Republican parties in town, you know, they're always good about spreading the word. And really, you know, any of those boards, I think, are who you're looking for. And I can give you all the contact info.
That's good, that's good.
You can add all that on the Town of Orange website.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we can find that. Economic development, yeah.
Yeah, identifying who the commissioners are, right.
And do you, sorry to skip to content, but are you gonna tell us ahead of time what they're going to be engaged about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, by the way, the key stakeholders that we usually begin with also are department heads, for instance, police and fire.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you raised that, and the school district. And we were talking to Jack earlier today. One thing the plan of development, or we like not to do, and it's not about, we're not telling the school district how to run the school. We're not telling the fire department how to manage itself or the police department. But what we are interested in is, gee, is the school district at capacity? What's the enrollment like? May it need something that would, that could impact the plan of development, the future land use plan? And that usually, I find in most of the communities we're working in, usually there's not a new school involved. However, in my hometown here in Connecticut, we just built a new school. And so that's a land use matter, we'd like to get it in the plan. The fire department is usually, our fire department section would be usually about the department itself and learning from them what their needs are. We've learned to also sift those through the town leadership or whoever's in charge of finance here so that we get a sense of financial implications of anything and also the police department. So we wanna meet with your department heads almost first. So when we are reaching out to a community, we're also sharing some information with them.
That's, oh, go ahead, I was just gonna say. That's item 1.4 on the timeline is the department head forwarding committee meetings. I think in terms of community engagement, we would also like to know if there's other people that maybe aren't formally involved or, you know, nonprofits or those sorts of other things, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think the first selectman would be a good, good person to answer that for you.
Okay, perfect. And as I said before, if there's any other sort of hard to reach populations, maybe sort of English as our second language, those sorts of things, we're happy to make those resources available, too, if you're aware of any, reach out.
Absolutely.
I think that's, and the one last thing on community engagement, so in terms of the workshops. So the first workshop, like I said, is more of a information sharing, getting some initial feedback on vision. There's a few different formats for this. And Frank, you can jump in if you have a preference, but I know one format that, which we often do is the town hall. So that's where we give a presentation and then we have a Q and A.
Yeah, and you take a break after it, and it's the, it's what I'm used to anyway, particularly here in Connecticut. It's the New England Town Hall. And that is, you're hearing from everybody, everybody has a chance to speak. We'll sometimes add to that, for instance, during the break or on the way out, we'll have boards, people can put, if they see a particular problem in town, we use a, you know, sticky stickers go on the board and we see opportunities or we ask questions about visioning, goals and objectives, that type of thing. But a key is to be able to have people, we'll sometimes, I find that sometimes if we do too much, interactive, you know, workshops, which we like, and roundtable discussions, at the end, we find people saying, hey, wait a minute, we didn't really have a chance to just get up and tell you what we think. And beginning with a sort of New England Town Hall, I find is, is good. It gives people a chance to speak and be heard, but also a chance to use some boards, you know, stickers on those boards, that type of thing. And also the first workshop will give us a sense of if we can ask some of the right questions in the PowerPoint presentation about vision or goals and objectives of people to say, hey, are the current, are the current plans, goals and objectives right? What would you like? We might have a board on that so during the break, they can respond with, you know, writing on that board. And that guides us a little bit to questions after the workshop, to questions we might ask in a survey. Because the online, what we like to do with the online survey and printed copies in the library, that type of thing. Cause as you said, not everybody is, you know, that comfortable on a computer. We'd have hard copies of it also available. But that survey is not as open-ended. It's, it's gonna ask people to choose specific things so it can be tabulated at the end. And then the second workshop, we have all those tabulations so that people see. And they can respond to that then in roundtable discussion, so. That was our idea for the first, you know, kind of first.
The second is a little bit more interactive. So the second still has that interactive component, but is more roundtable discussions, whereas the first one is sort of a broader look at the plan.
Okay. Great, great. And I think the next item, before we get into sort of issues and opportunities and focus areas that you see, I thought it'd be great if Thomas could just sort of give some thoughts, particularly on economic development.
So, a little bit into the issue of opportunities, focus areas, we talked about this, you know, sort of with Jack and how we would approach everything. So, you know, the community engagement, we will give you like a 10-page document that outlines the community engagement strategy before we start to implement it to make sure that it works for everybody and you understand our procedure all the way along over the next year of how this is gonna be implemented. Then we move into how we look at our chapters, as Frank said, but then issues and opportunities is gonna be a key one, especially for our second meeting. So through the surveying and then as well, what we'll do with the interaction part of it is, we talked about economic development. I'd like to be able I'd like to be able to get maps up and say, you know, where would you like to see some of this development happen? And so, you know, red is, no, we don't want it here, green, yeah, we want it here, yellow, it's just about right, stuff like that. Um, and so then that way, as we start to look at Route One and the, uh, the corporate parks and, uh, the business parks and everything else, we get a much better idea of what the economy is and what people are really looking for within, uh, the town itself. And sort of, you know, we are able to gauge a little bit of interest on how much more development they want, or how much less development they want. And it allows us then to start doing some projections, um, you know, for how people actually look at the land use in the current zoning that you have in there, doesn't make sense, are the right uses in there? Is there anything else that you may wanna see come in? Because we've had in other communities, when we start to work through that surveying, you know, in terms of retail, we want X, Y, Z, but say the zoning doesn't allow that. And so that way, as we start to work into the actual land use final chapters, we're able to start making those corrections, say, we're, we're, this is one of the suggestions that you'll end up making all the way through. That then ties into both your environmental and your transportation side of it. So if there is areas where you want to increase development or increase density or not in, uh, increase that, you know, we can then start to adjust all the other chapters as you move along, which is really, really important, because it's sort of a trickle-down effect. Economics drives a town because that is your tax base. And if you are showing that we don't want any more development, well, that's gonna impact the bottom line of your assessment, but also your capital budget, because that's really what all the taxes come to pay for. So as we start to work through all of that, like I said, we'll have these nice matrices that will sort of show, if you do X, then this is what the actual development will sort of generate in taxes, if you move to that type of density. Or if you wanna reduce the density, this is what it would actually sort of show in the app. And so it's a great visual for people to understand, cause that's probably, I, I found in my twenty-three years of municipal government, taxes are probably the thing that nobody understands, how the assessment is done and everything else, and how you actually come up with your final budget for everything. So ideally with that section there and, and working through everything else, we're gonna give a much clearer picture to everybody. So they understand the ramifications when either they come up and say yes, or they come up and say no.
One thing we've got an impression of, which I'd like to test with you before we break tonight. And that is just reading, sort of reading your, your current plan and going around the town, talking to Jack. Is that I think it's a beautiful town. I get a sense just from those, those sources, that most people like the town. And that, uh, there haven't been huge controversies. Uh, I know there's been some, and of course, there's been the constant, um, I just happen to read the local press for years. I'm not calling the Haven Register local here. But, you know, every time there's a rumor about Stu Leonard's, it seems to make the, it seems to make the register. But an impression we have is that the, the town's a very beautiful town, it's in pretty good shape. Um, you've got a significant tax base on Route One, but most of the town is residential, I guess, what I'd call R sixty. And, uh, um, and you've got nice, some remaining agriculture that's good. Uh, Treats Farm is one I happen to have known about for a long time, and we went to see it today. And there's other farms that are important. And that, the preservation of those things remains an important element. So we've gotta balance the, the preservation of things, uh, the single-family nature of the town with, with a solid, trying to get, as what Thomas said, and, and sort of, sort of reinforce what you have in the best possible way on Route One and your industrial parks in the southern part of town, so. I, I, I don't know if I hit that right or not.
I think you hit the nail on the head for me anyway.
It's pretty, it's pretty simple to understand the town. There are two major transportation corridors and then a minor, uh, people transportation corridor, the Merritt Parkway. But, you know, the, the, the layers of the onion are industrial around ninety-five, transitioning to retail around Route One, transitioning to residential to the board.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, pretty, pretty straightforward.
And it's worked. And it's, and so we wanna, wanna make sure, and this is a good first meeting for us, cause we wanna just sort of test out some initial, just a very initial, just initial impression, and we'll try to, you know, do that and flush it out.
Yeah, hopefully what I'd like to do is I'll probably send you a little questionnaire, just on the issues, opportunities and sort of focus areas. Just because what we'd like to do is get it like a ten-year span, you've been, you know, since your last P O C D. So as we start to go through this P O C D, what is some of the stuff that's really popped up? Or what has really been issues that you found as a board that should have been addressed, but maybe wasn't addressed?
Everybody wants to be special, that's the issue that we usually.
But it, but it helps us out as we move into that first public meeting. And as we design the survey, it sort of lends us with a little bit more background into it. And also with the development, really go the meetings for the departments, that's, you know, really helps us out, so.
It's interesting, Tom, because in this statute, zoning isn't responsible for economic development. In fact, tax generation should not be part of our decisions.
Yep.
When we have a proposal. So it's interesting that you say it drives the ship, because I could tell you, if we could say, we could make a gazillion dollars, we're gonna throw a commercial near Turkey Hill, you know, we're, we're not gonna.
But it may not work.
It's not gonna work.
Yeah.
Um, so it's just interesting, you know.
Yeah, we have to balance that. And, and you're, you're right, it's the P and Z is, uh, you know, you, you've got the land use control and the zoning control. You don't have, that's why we do wanna talk to Board of Selectmen and First Selectmen. There's, we do wanna be though aware of any land use decisions that have, you know, significant financial impacts. And we don't wanna make recommendations also that are expensive, right, that are expensive, not realistic. We wanna keep recommendations that are, um, realistic, practical, and that, that you are comfortable with. Because it is your five votes that, um, you know, that.
I, I think you're going, I mean, at least the situ, I mean personally, that people generally like the way the town is and are willing to consider modifications at the transitions to increase their happiness, but are not looking for major, you know, overhauls.
Right, right.
You know, but, you know, that, that's, uh, I'm sure we could find a, that's from the grunted part of the, uh.
It's interesting, like, yeah, it's interesting, cause we're just finishing up in Newtown right now. And one of the big components we found was the fact that the population aged quite a bit. So there's a big jump in that median age all the way up. And one of the things they hadn't put into the zoning was really planning for the senior services. So whether it would be a shuttle around, or they said, listen, we actually need more medical offices. You guys got a great selection of medical offices here. But that was the one thing that Newtown didn't have. And so that's what they're now gonna start to look at potentially zoning is, we need, how do we get another medical office building here? So I don't have to travel to Danbury to go get service, so. Do you even bus that goes around town for the seniors?
Mm-hmm.
You did?
I've never taken it, I've seen it around.
You'll find out, you'll find out soon.
I was gonna say, you'll learn soon.
And some of the assisted living facilities also have a bus service too, that they utilize to get residents around.
O V and A as well.
Yeah. Well, that's all we had tonight, uh, for you, and this was very helpful to us. We got a date coming up, we're aiming for with you, and then a workshop. And, uh, we said, we'll, we'll be in touch pretty much weekly with, with Jack, so.
And you'll have, you'll have our email addresses as.
Of course, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
By the way, uh, one housekeeping, I'm sorry, forgot to mention this. We usually like, um, this is just a matter of the press calling us. We will tell them they should send everything through Jack. Um, we like to not talk to the press or to an individual citizen without you knowing, or without you asking us to. That way you don't get, you know, uh, we don't want citizens sending us stuff. They should send everything through Jack, I think. That way, Jack sees everything and he informs you, so that we don't act in a, in a, in a vacuum. I know that, you know, I don't wanna see myself quoted in the, whatever paper, you know, and you don't know about it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You look young to me, I don't think you have to worry about that.
You're getting on that bus.
You already have the job. I don't think that really hit in mind at all. Sure.
Thanks again.
Yes, thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll be in touch.
All right. And I guess the only other item we had to discuss this evening under new business is a review of potential regulation amendment regarding automotive location points, permits.
Right.
Sorry, permits.
So.
I mean, I, I looked at this, I, this sort of comes out of the clear blue sky.
Yeah, this, um, like I said, this isn't, you know, any set in stone language. This is just, you know, what me and Owen sort of went over, actually at the same meeting, we were talking about those in-law permits. Um, the state of Connecticut changed their state statute, uh, fourteen dash fifty-four, and repealing the authority of the zoning board of appeals to rule on automotive locations. So if an automotive repair shop or someone with a, uh, general repair license wants to come into town on a property that is not currently used for such use, it was shifted the responsibility from the zoning board of appeals to the local zoning official. So typically over the last however many years, one of the few items that the zoning board of appeal would rule on is these automotive locations. It was not a site plan location, or a site plan application. It was specifically just, does this use match the zoning regulations in town to be on this property?
So this, this statute, I haven't had a chance to take a look at fourteen dash fifty-four, but.
Right.
But it, it takes away that power.
Exactly, so it was originally up to the zoning board of appeals to say, yes, you are within the local zoning regulations to put in automotive use here. It really was, there's no point in giving that to the Z B A.
I wonder what the history of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure it's, it'd be interesting to see, but for some reason, this responsibility fell to the Z B A, even though they're really, their main is for variances and appeals to the enforcement officer's decision. This was kind of the third one that was just thrown their way.
So, so the, the, uh, part of the, um, the amendment that's a, a, um, a repeal of that authority in the Z B A is basically mandated by state law.
It, it is, right, so our.
We're just conforming our.
Our local changes right now are to come in conformance with the new state regulation. That's, that's all this is.
Probably had the, the, uh, ability to make that the, you know, the, the, uh, the decision of either the zoning enforcement officer or the commission.
Um, no, so the, the new language reads, any person who desires to obtain a license and present it to the commissioner, a certificate of approval to the commissioner of, um, the, uh, the D M V, a certificate of approval from the zoning enforcement official of the municipality where such license is desired, affirming that the propa, proposed location and use of the property conform to the zoning regulations of such municipality.
That's what.
That's what you do, right?
That's what it, well, not as of, that, well, that's typically, yes, yeah, that, so now it matches pretty much every other use that comes into town.
What you, what you read.
That is the new, that is the new language, yes.
The statute.
Yes, directly from the state statute, yes. So again, it took that.
So what you have in the zoning regulations mirrors what's in.
Well, with this change, it will. So we're taking, um, you know, this crossed out section was in the Z B A regulations saying that item number four, motor vehicle uses, it is their responsibility to hear and decide, request for a certificate of approval of location as specified in the general statutes, such as for gasoline, gasoline stations, automobile repairs and dealers, and other motor vehicle uses.
That was in our reg, that's in our.
That was in our regulations at, under the Z B A's responsibility. We are now getting rid of that.
With the.
And adding the language to.
So it becomes the zoning.
It becomes my responsibility. And this is not a, the zoning enforcement official has a ton of discretion over whether or not they think this location is appropriate. It's like a site plan, it's either they fit or they do not. So if they, if they're in a location, the use, they're in a location where it is permitted as of right.
Or permitted by special.
Or by special, yeah, or by special permit, I'd say, yeah, you, you go in front of the board. Um, but it doesn't mean I get to, you know, I have a ton of discretion over this, it's really, it's black and white, it's yes or no.
You, you're not gonna approve one in a residential neighborhood.
Right, yes.
Well, hopefully the regulations don't allow that.
They don't.
Um, no, so this was, we haven't noticed this, this is gonna have to be a public hearing, we gotta send it to the, to the SCROG. This was just kind of making everyone aware that this was coming down the pipeline. Um, but if everyone is comfortable with it, I'd like to send this language out, get it reviewed, and then schedule a public hearing when.
Do you need a, uh, a motion from us to authorize you to send it to a public hearing?
Not really at this stage, I think, you know, I would just write this down as upon the initiative of the Orange Zoning Commission.
Yeah.
That's what I would do, I, I don't think it requires any formal vote as of right now.
All right. Does anybody have any hesitancy on this, or?
No, we're.
Like I said, this was, this was provided to me from Owen Weaver, I, I did go with this with him, so.
It's, it's just, uh, it's just, you know, it follows from the, the statute.
Exactly, it's, uh, necessary housekeeping based on changes at the state level.
So that's duly on our.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll get that, I will get that going. We'll probably see that in about a month, cause that's the review time.
And, and, you know, the language, I, I imagine this language, it's being added tracks what's in the, what's in the statute.
That is correct.
All right, I guess that, oh, no.
Reported Z E O?
Uh, yeah, reported as zoning enforcement, Jack, do you have anything else for us?
The only thing I have is I, I know I mentioned the car wash came in, um, I did issue an approval, uh, for that site plan. So once they post bond, um, they're gonna be pulling demo permits with the building department, um, getting going there.
They're gonna enhance their.
Enhance their car wash experience. Um, and the only other thing is I'm keeping up with residential violations, um, following up with people, making sure they are, um, you know, taking care of the violations that they've been cited for. Um, there, there have been quite a number of those going on, um, but nothing, nothing too, too crazy. Yeah, it's, I drove by the other day, it looks great.
No violations.
No issues over there, on my end.
We'll have to send, we'll have to send somebody over.
Yeah, I was gonna, I'll send somebody who'll find a problem over there. Other than that, I, I have nothing else.
All right. I guess that's it, if, anything, anything else? All right then, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, boys and girls.
We're done at, uh, just before eight-ten.